Okay, now that we're back in the regular session, the first item of business is to accept the agenda. And I'm unaware of any proposed changes to the agenda as presented. Do we have a motion to ...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Jump right in there. No, it's fine.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented. Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. That carries unanimously. Okay, so that moves us on to a public comment. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to address the board? And seeing no one indicating such, let's move on then to new staff introductions. And first one is Corky.
Corky's gonna do our first one.
So, now we finally have our new public information and marketing manager, Mark Schultz. He's, I'll let him talk in detail about himself a little bit, but he came to us. He's got about 20 years in either public information or working for media outlets. And he's been here five weeks now and is doing tremendous job for us. So, Mark?
Well, good evening, everybody. As Corky said, I am a 20-year resident of Champaign County. And I have, counting my time, actually, I think I misled you a little bit. I have about 23 or 24 years of total media experience, but 20 years here in ...
As long as it's more, it's better.
Yes. But 20 years here in Champaign County. I first came here in 1997 to work at WDWS Radio. I was in their news department, covered many local issues, municipal, county issues. And I believe my closest workings with the Park District at the time were when I was, I think I interviewed Corky about the indoor aquatics center as that project was taking off. And then I also worked for a brief time at WILL News. And in the public relations and marketing fields, I have worked at Carl Foundation Hospital in public and media relations. I have also worked at Urbana School District. I was their public relations and marketing manager for three years. I, the job at the school district is almost exactly the same as a job here that I currently hold as a Park District. And I just loved that job at the school district, and I just absolutely love my time here. And one of my big passions is telling great stories. I love to tell great stories about people, organizations doing great things. Urbana Park District has great stories to tell, and I am glad to be part of it. And I look forward to telling those stories for many, many years to come.
That's great. I heard your name, and I thought, I know that. I know that name. I heard that. Those are my two radio stations. So, you know, welcome aboard. It's nice to have a familiar name with us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay. And then next, Ellen?
So, next, I would like to introduce our sports and athletics intern. This is Jake Prezant, and he is from the University of Illinois. He's doing his end of his academic career internship, so he's here full-time with us this spring. And he's also doing some time in the business office, helping Katie with a number of different projects. So, he can tell you a little bit about himself and what he's up to.
Yeah, so, I'm a resident of North City of Chicago. I worked at my Park District all throughout high school, coaching mainly, you know, fifth, sixth grade boys. I actually went to the University of Arizona as a freshman, then transferred to Parkland, and then made my way to the University of Illinois for my final three semesters. I will be taking a position in business in Chicago. So, when I came in to want to do my internship, I wanted to stay in the area of Champaign-Urbana. So, when I met with Ellen, I kind of told her that, yeah, I'm RST, Sports Management major, but I'm highly interested in the business side of, you know, the Park District and budget and all that stuff. So, we worked on a, you know, pretty good schedule that had me working with athletics, coaching basketball, helping Kyle and Greg out, as well as doing half my hours in the, over at the cottage in the operations department.
Great. So, what will you be doing once you've finished your internship?
I'm actually going to Wintrust Bank in Chicago. Commercial lending program. It's a two-year rotational program. From there, probably become a, you know, banker, lend money.
Sounds great. Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the Urbana Park District report, Urbana Park District Ex advisory committee, the UPDAC report. And I see Roger is here.
You have my written report in your packet as usual. Just, I wanted to share a few impressions of the last meeting we had. From my perspective, Katie did a wonderful job of helping us to understand the way the Park District is funded, particularly with respects to the tax levy. Most of us had, didn't have really any experience with how that works. I won't say we were horrified, but we ...
Geez, Katie, what did you tell them?
We were surprised by the complexity and the uncertainty. And I think we asked, if you look at the questions that I kind of reported out, that's really what it was concerning. It was difficult for UPDAC members to grasp the fact that you really don't know what you're going to get, and that you have to guess, and that you have to guess high. Several people asked questions about that. There was a concern, I think, about, basically, how can we get more money? And, you know, there are limits. And one thing I think is that I take away from the discussion that we had and the questions that came up about the limits to taxing, the uncertainty, was I think that as we move toward the public phase of the foundation's fundraising project, we've been asked as a committee to be supportive of that. And I think we have a much firmer idea now of why that is important. And I think you're going to have some very strong advocates on UPDAC, more so than you might have before we fully understood what the, how the income stream works. So, I want to thank Katie for helping us understand that, and Tim, for suggesting that we do that. When you first suggested it, it was like, oh, money. But it was really helpful, so.
Yeah, I think politically right now, there's a push to shut down some of the units of government. They want to do away with the township level.
Yes.
And I could see people wanting to do away with Park Districts. And so, I think that's real important, that we keep people aware of that difference.
Yes.
Yeah, I heard good things at the pool, too. About, yes. No snoozing, is what I heard.
That's all I have.
Okay, well, I appreciate the UPDAC taking on that topic, that is, to try to learn that, because it is very arcane and certainly counterintuitive in my mind, the way that all works. And it's a big help to have more people out in the community that have some sense of just how arcane it is. And that, when you see that black box in the newspaper, it isn't because we've gone off our nut seeking a huge amount more money, that we're shooting in the dark, so.
Well, Katie named the question that I've already been asked, and that was, well, if the Park District is, you know, wanting, you know, wanting more money for this program, that program, how come they can build, you know, thus and such? So, she helps us to understand the difference between capital budget and income stream. So, that was good. Thank you.
And I think that the UPDAC committee is also giving us advice, but they're also then talking to your friends and relatives and explaining to them some of these difficulties. So, it helps spread that word more effectively.
Absolutely.
Yes, counterintuitive is the perfect word for it.
Yes, it was. Thank you.
Well, thanks much for coming out tonight.
Sure.
All right, next up is our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda for this evening, we have the approval of the minutes of the February 6th Board Study Session, the February 13th Regular Board Meeting, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, the regular monthly reports from the 3A divisions, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, and action to approve ordinance 2018-02 to authorize the disposal sale or sale of personal property of the district. Under the rules of the consent agenda, it is the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Is there any commissioner wishing to move anything off of the consent agenda? Seeing no indication, then, is there a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda in an omnibus fashion?
I move that to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded, and under our rules, there is to be no further discussion. And we need a roll call vote on this. We'll start to the left with Commissioner Cunningham.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners, voting in the affirmative. So, we're on to the financial reports.
Hello. If you haven't heard me talk enough tonight, but tonight I'll be talking to you about the performance of the Park District for the month of February that we just finished up. So, we're 10 months into the fiscal year. We're really winding things down now. It's easy to see ...
Can we interrupt for a second, though? As long as we're tooting, we ought to toot our horn a little bit, GFOA.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I forgot. I would have forgotten. I brought tonight, I'm very proud of it. We received the GFOA award for excellence in financial reporting for our 2017 CAFER. This is our 18th consecutive year, so I can't take claim for all of those years, but this one I can. So, and really, Dottie was still acting business manager in FY16, so I did this all by myself. So, it was really exciting. So, she retired in August 2015, which was partway into FY16. So, it was an achievement to get it last year, but really, truly, I feel responsible for the books of the Park District now. And I'm going to pass this around, and you can all oogle over it.
Good job.
Thank you, Michael. And I think the entire district should be proud of that, not just me, because it goes to show how diligent we are in reporting our financials accurately and being transparent to our taxpayers, so. So, good job, board. Okay, well, I'll jump back into the finances for the month of February. So, the first report that I'll discuss briefly is the fund balance report. This is the report that discusses the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for the 10 months ending in February 28th, 2018. Oh, I should say about the GFOA award you're passing around, Mark Schultz, who was just here, he put out a press release to all the local news outlets, so if any of them pick it up, it might wind up in the paper, so look out for that. He also put a little promo about it on our website to make sure everyone was aware. So, we're trying to get the word out there that we have good books, so we do our best. Okay, so, "Some One" is the first page of this report. This is all funds except for the Capital Improvements Fund. Revenues for this period were $8,294,000, which is an increase of $53,000 since January. Expenditures were $7,209,000, which is a change of $366,000 since January, and we have a surplus after 10 months. That means there's an excess of revenues over expenditures of $1,085,000. And we have a net change in fund balance after 10 months of $1,085,000. So, that net change in fund balance will continue to decrease as we work through the last two months of the fiscal year, down to what we have budgeted, which is a decrease in fund balance of $209,000. And I don't think we'll get there, because like I say, kind of this time of year, we spend around $500,000 a year or a month in expenditures during the slower months, these winter months, it's closer to $400,000. So, I don't think we're going to get all the way down to what we budgeted as a decrease. We'll probably wind up somewhere between zero and like maybe plus $200,000 is my guess. So, that's good. Capital Improvements Fund is on page two. Sum two. Revenues for this 10-month period were $187,000. Expenditures were $595,000. Expenditures exceed revenues, which means there's a deficit of $408,000. Bond proceeds of $710,000 were received in other sources, for a total of $710,000 of other sources, which leaves a net increase in fund balance in the Capital Improvements Fund of $302,000, which we will continue to spend down as the rest of the fiscal year. The budget for that was a net decrease of almost $400,000. We're definitely not going to get there, but we do have ongoing projects that will continue to pay out for the next two months. So, we'll probably get closer to zero on that one as well. And finally, sum three. I'd just like to note that the ending fund balance for the whole district at the end of February is $7,822,000. Following that are the summaries for the main working funds, general, recreation, museum, and the indoor pool. And I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have about the fund balance report. Well, moving on, we'll go on to the budget analysis with history report. This report shows a historical comparison of the same 10-month period of the current year and the prior three years. So, 10 months of the fiscal year is around 83 percent. So, that's a number you can compare to. The first section of this report is all funds district-wide. In the middle of page two, if you look at the total revenues and transfers in for this 10-month period, we're $11,554,000, and we've received 99 percent of our property taxes. I'm looking forward to receiving our May payments pretty soon here for the next levy year. Our revenues are a little bit behind. We haven't received as many of the revenues as we had at this point in the same, in the fiscal year compared to the prior three years, and I did a little bit of analysis on that. The main reason for that is because we haven't received our TIF reimbursement yet, and there was a schedule change for that reimbursement with the new agreement that we went into about two years ago. And so, we can't, we're not, previously, we would bill for that reimbursement in July and receive it in August. But now, we're not allowed to even send the bill until the final property tax receipts have been received in November. And so, last year, we billed them in November or December and received the payment in January. This year, we sent the bill in January and received it in February, or we received it on Monday, yesterday. So, we actually just got it yesterday. So, it'll be in March's performance. But it was actually more than budgeted. We got $110,000 instead of 108,000. So, that was good. But I think once we get that, when you look at the March reports, the revenue will be more caught up to what we're expecting to see at this point in the year. And I also will have performed some of the other remaining transfers at that point as well. As far as expenditures go, the, our expenditures are performing very well, as I've said the last few meetings. If you look at the expense totals on the third page, you can see our expense totals for this 10-month period is $10,167,000. And we are ending February with a surplus of $1,387,000. And if you look at the percentages across the board and the dollar amount across the board, we're pretty much ahead of the prior three years. And a lot of that's because in our budget, we have budgeted, for example, the accounting software project that we're not spending. So, that's going to affect the percent of budget spent, because we didn't spend it. But dollar-wise, that goes to show that our performance was very good, especially like part-time salaries was quite good, and some of the other expenditure categories, they're just performing well, so. That's all I, go ahead, Michael. Did you have a comment? Okay. That's all I had to say about the budget analysis with history report, so we can move on to the treasures report. The treasures report is the report of the amount of cash that the district has on one day, February 28th, 2018. All 24 funds are listed with where the cash is invested for a grand total of $9,619,792.26. And on page two at the top is a list of the investments that the district has in interest-bearing accounts. You can see of the $9,620,000 the district has, $8,128,000 is invested. So, we try to keep as much invested as possible, other than what we need for payments to vendors and payroll. The inter-fund loan section is the next section at the bottom of this page. You can see there is a new inter-fund loan this period. I added a loan between the Recreation Fund and the indoor pool, because the indoor pool ran out of money. And I realized today, sorry, they just ran out of money to pay their bills. It happens at the end of every year. But I realized today that instead of doing inter-fund loan, what I really need to do is just go ahead and do a partial transfer of our half of our payment, so that's what I'll do for March. It's fine to do an inter-fund loan as well, but I'll return the inter-fund loan and just have a partial payment for what we're going to owe anyway, and that'll just keep, usually we would do it at the end of the fiscal year, but we'll just do a partial payment now, and that'll keep them in the positive, in the black, so to speak. So, which is, I think, what I did last year, so I don't know why I did it this way. But that's the thing about accounting, is you think it's black and white, but then it turns out there's multiple ways you can do things, and they're all okay. So, at the end of the year, this inter-fund loan would have gotten reversed anyway when we made our payment. So, one way or another, it doesn't stay on the books, so.
Katie, did Jason Anselman say something about new ways for investment?
Yeah, and it was in one of the broadcasts that they did as well. I need to learn more about it, since it wasn't finalized yet. I hadn't put a lot into it, because what'll wind up having to happen is, once we know what the changes to the law are, we'll have to also change our investment policy to allow it. Because even if the law allows it, if our investment policy doesn't, we can't do it anyway. But I think it's just allowing for some other interest-bearing type investments, you know.
Not a huge change.
I don't think it's a huge change, but even that little .5 would be better than nothing, so.
Yeah.
It's pretty limited what we can do with CDs. So, I'm not sure exactly what it is, but I'll for sure find out and let you know.
Sure.
And finally, on page three is a list of the disbursements that were made in February. We had $390,000 of disbursements for this period. I present this treasures report to you for approval.
I move we accept the treasures report for audit.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye opposed? That carries unanimously.
A couple more reports to discuss. The first is the supplemental report of cash. This has the same information as the first page of the treasures report, but groups the information differently by expected use rather than by fund name. The expected uses are daily operating funds, restricted special needs, and restricted gifts and donations. Of the $9,620,000 available, $1,268,000 are restricted obligations, leaving $8,352,000 available as spendable cash for the district. And finally, I'll touch on the areas of activity in the capital budgets. The items highlighted with an asterisk are where there were activity this period. In the 2018 capital budget on the first page, donations were received for tributes, including a specific tribute in memory of Tom Burns that went towards AmBucks Park. So, we've established a separate line to track those donations that are coming in. So far, we've received $225,000, but I think there were more donations received since then, so I think that amount will grow. And there was expenses paid for the design of the Meadowbrook Gateway, which is also being funded by a donation. In the 2017 capital budget, expenditures occurred on tributes, Hazard Tree Work, the ITUP Park Street Path Project, and on a new expression swing for the Sunny Crest Tot Lot that was funded by a donation. And in the 2016 capital budget, this month, expenditures occurred on construction crew projects and Crystal Lake Park renderings. And now, Andy and Derek have some updates for you on capital projects.
Yep. I'll first touch on the indoor pool air handling replacement. We have a bid for the unit currently out. The unit that's specified is currently, includes 4.1 air changes per hour. What we currently have is 2.6.
Oh, wow.
So, we should see some upgrades just on the unit itself. And this will include the VFD, variable frequency drives as well. It's included with the system. Another thing that we had mentioned before with the project is the possibility of the deck level evacuation. We had Heniman, our engineer for the project, do a small report and analysis of that system, do some pricing estimates. What we've decided is that we will not include it with the project. We'll have the ability to add it later on, but I think, you know, we were all wanting to see what this unit itself would do before we invest a large amount of money into adding something significantly new into the facility. So, that system is what draws the air across the body of water and then evacuates it at that deck level.
Part of the existing ventilation system has some conflicting design parameters for that system, and they're going to make some improvements to it independent of putting the paddock in any way that'll improve air quality. It's something we could still compare at a later date, but their opinion was that we're better served to put money into getting those extra air exchanges to meet the engineering guidelines for that facility.
So, Heniman's still investigating some of those other options we've discussed about adjusting, variably adjusting the ventilation based on pool chemistry. We'll look to have some feedback in the next couple of weeks on whether that kind of system would work well within our facility. Alternatively, if we don't do a sensor that, based off the water chemistry, it'll be an air sensor for CO2, where it can adjust based on the amount of people breathing in the space, and then be able to ventilate at that increased or decreased rate. We'll have a bid opening next week. The recommendation from that bid opening and provided by Heniman at that point will be taken to the pool management team. That includes our administrative staff and the school district as well. And the recommendation then will come to you all at the April study session for approval. Separate bid will be let probably in May, April or May. That will be for the actual installation of the unit itself, so you could expect to see a recommendation to award that project in May or June. And again, the timeframe that we're dealing with is very tight. I think I say it every month almost, but we're trying to fit into that three-week window, the end of July and early August. But as of now, everything's looking like we're on track. Phillips Rec Center improvements. This is replacing that original wood siding. It goes out to bed later this week. The project will include replacement of the entire building siding with cement fiber product that we have at the lake house and at the outdoor pool. It's scheduled to go to you for award in the April board meeting. And I'll note, just coinciding with this project, there'll be a new landscaping.
So, who was going to ask?
Yeah. It's, we're going to try to work as they work around the building. We can have our staff kind of follow them, and, you know, we're anticipating this to wrap up early summer. And then we'll go out for the James Room project in the fall.
Once our landscape staff get into a project, they have our time stopping, so. Once our landscape staff get into a project, they have our time stopping, so we're all to the parking lot screening, which has been, well, it's, it's sort of aged out and we've heard from some staff, they actually don't feel safe going in their car at night. So we're going to replace that as well as part of this project.
On the, what is that, sort of north?
Sort of the west edge of the, by the parking, parking lot inside.
No, the shrubs.
Yes. Heavy dense use.
Row of shrubs.
Something more like the cottage parking area landscaping or?
Well, because it's residential, it still needs to be an evergreen, that'll be a little bit more compact and a little bit more controlled.
Just a comment, that landscape went into brown 1995, so we often think about landscapes forever. And there are some trees you can sort of put in that category, but most perennial shrub border type landscapes need renovating, replacement over a period of time, so. We're really excited, what was there before served really well. But we have a real opportunity to create another showcase look like we have at our other buildings, like the cottage, this building, nature center, kind of a signature look. We had a very tight budget with that landscape, so not that we're rolling out it this time.
It's been, I mean, it has looked good for a long time, and it doesn't look, I mean, aside from safety issues, it doesn't look like it needs to be.
Kind of go down, that's when you want to kick back in, but it's very visible, we have a very highly visible site, maybe more visible than these other, you know, facilities. So we're excited what you guys are doing.
I'll, I'll share those comments with the landscape staff because they, they've struggled with it. In fact, even back to Rick Carr, our last landscape technician, he, that was one of his dreams, was to be able to get in there and do, do some updates. So they're excited to have this opportunity. And it's not, you know, so, so it's really exciting to see Phillips progress, you know, we, we did some of the interior work. Now we're doing exterior, we're going to come back and do a little bit more interior with the kitchen, Andy was probably going to talk about that. But then next year is, is the playground project, so in a relatively short period of time, we're really going to flip that facility, kind of like we did the nature center a few years back.
We love that impact because people notice, you know, it's different, dramatically different, and they tell us they like it, and so it's a good thing.
I think I talked a little bit last month about the habitat garden outside the nature center. It's that amenity that you can see from the observation area, it's that naturalized looking, the idea was to make it like a naturalized looking stream, have gentle pooling and splashing. That has been pretty much, almost fully completed, but not quite yet. The past couple of days, really, Chris from Chris's Water Gardens and Keith, our construction crew, have amazingly installed almost everything that needs to go in there, all the, the rocks and the, the big stones and the water system.
Wow.
So right now, there's, if you would go there, there's water flowing over just a, a bed of river rock with large stones surrounding it and intermingled within, and it looks great, so.
But do the birds like it? Have we seen?
So, so, so far it's sparrows, you know.
Well, they're not hard to please.
If you can't attract sparrows, you're in trouble.
There'll be a whole new landscaping plan that still needs to, to go in around there.
Up and around the, yeah, yeah, that was looking pretty shallow.
Yeah. More larger stones to kind of intermix within that and then also additionally add to the, that feature itself to, to make it look even better than it already does.
So we're going to have limestone to kind of carry out the theme, or are you going to have sort of boulder type?
If this water feature is more boulder, we advise that the limestone has some water chemistry impacts it and creates algae growth.
Oh yeah, right, sure.
But yeah, so we'll come back with some water plants in April and Matt's working with the master naturalists. In fact, he has a meeting next week, they're going to help with some, some design redesign for the, the planting around there, so very exciting. If you go out in the next couple of days, note the water's a little cloudy, Chris says this to be expected, it takes about three days for the water to clear up, so.
Yes.
It's a little turbid right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Last thing I wanted to mention is we had a, a meeting last week, end of last week, it was very productive. MTD and Farnsworth Group, I think we overwhelmed them with the amount of information and research we had already completed up to this point, just looking at a potential downtown Urbana intergovernmental facility. So we, as we've shared with you in past meetings, we went through our, our visits and things we liked and didn't like and current deficiencies and needs that we're seeing for future indoor recreation space. It went very well, I think.
Great, cool.
Okay. I think moving on to the executive director's report.
Great, well, obviously a very busy time, we're always busy, but it's interesting to me that we have sort of the December, January internal time, a little quieter due to weather and, you know, conferences coming up. But shortly after that, we hit the bricks for the rest of the season. Starting off, just an update, we had our Illinois Association of Park District's legislative breakfast yesterday. It was at the Virginia Theater, I think it turned out really, really well. We, we always think they're important and have a lot of value, but I think our staff was particularly interested in this topic, which was generated by the Joint Legislative Committee of IPRA and IAPD to really try to focus on future project, future needs that relate to grants. We've been, you know, get on my soapbox again, we've been, you know, really talking about this intensely for the last three years. We've had a number of years prior to that where it was very chaotic, so we haven't really had a very good grants forecast for the, you know, the past five to seven years. No surprise, every district probably in the state, particularly in Champaign County, the ones that were there have very exciting projects. And the ones that were promoted were all projects that would likely directly benefit or probably be ranked very high if there were grant programs. So again, I think our team wants to kind of move from identifying the problem over and over to let's strategize for solutions. What can we do, working with our staff, board, and advisory committee, to, you know, get our legislators all the way up to the governor's office to take notice that we believe these kind of projects will help bring economic benefits to our residents and that we're going to help kickstart our economies. Again, we're the believers, we already know how this works, we just need to convince others that there are dedicated funds sitting in banks and accounts somewhere that are being underutilized, that are earmarked for use and we can't let them be swept away or other types of things happen to them. So I think we kind of delivered that message. I think our legislators want to work with us, they see the value in all these good projects, they know what benefits we bring. So again, it might be an opportunity to reinvigorate our relationship with legislators and, and try to get something going. You know, over the last several years, we've been talking about different capital bill opportunities and, and whatnot. I think we have at least three or four projects that are ready to go, so-called shovel-ready to some degree, whether it's prelim planning, get started, or some level of construction, or, you know, hire architects to pull plans ready for, for bidding. So we're that ready. Obviously, the other side of that could be donor interest and we're working very intensely with our foundation to, you know, sort of score out that side. So I think we're doing what we can and, and I think we need to continue to dialogue with our legislators. And, and lastly, we're very fortunate, I think our legislators, at least the ones from, you know, Urbana area, they use our parks, they come to our facilities, they identify with our parks as their neighborhood or as a part of place they go on a regular basis. So I think we have legislators that are users of our facilities and know the value. And so I think we need, want to continue to, you know, work with them on that front.
Well, I talked to several of them, several of them, and they were talking about programming and their kids and their involvement in the programs.
Exactly, exactly.
I have it on my list to, to ask you, so I'll, I'll mention it now. I asked Scott Bennett if he had seen our, of course, he thought I was from the Champaign Park District, which I wasn't quite sure how to take that, but anyway. If he'd seen our underserved study, which I figured he probably hadn't, but I just wondered. So I wondered if we could put together a synopsis, it's a lot, I mean, it's a, it's a big study, it's a lot to ask anyone.
Sure.
As, as much information as they get in, I, I mean, I would like to be sort of appreciative of the time that they, that they would.
They need one page.
They do need one page.
A white paper.
Right, or, you know, with the possibility that if they're interested, or, you know, anyway, some sort of information so that they know that we're working on it and so that, I mean, because everyone that we have talked to about it says, wow, I didn't know, this is really impressive, this is really good, and I believe we are kind of out in the front, leading with this. And it never hurts to let people know
Right.
that we're kind of leading the pack, and this is, this is an important social issue, it's not, it's not just, you know, how many park benches we've got in each park. It's a, it's a, it involves the, the citizens, it involves their people who are going to be voting for them. So I think that if we could, I mean, I'm sure we have nothing else better to do than to do that, but I think that it actually would be a good thing to send it out, not just to Scott, but to other legislators.
I think that's an excellent idea, and if we're sharp, we'll take it with us when we go to Springfield.
Absolutely.
And leave it there and make sure the others get it mailed out. And I think it's also important because our top priority projects we're working on right now, we staff believes directly relate to that underrepresented group. There'll be a home or a place or an element or a program or component that'll speak to their need or their lack. So I agree with that. And then kind of tied in with that, I think staff wants to do a better job, we definitely want to do a better job of sending regular updates and packets, just to stay in contact. I know I really committed to that a couple of years ago, but we, we need to stick with that and actually give regular updates so that they're receiving them unsolicited, just filled with information about events, things that are going on or just changes, not overwhelming, but regular touches.
Would that be something that, that would be, come under Mark's purview?
I think we'd get Mark to work, but Kelsey's real interested in our office. I think we want to just kind of get it ready and then maybe she helps solicit pieces or, you know, what's a good story.
She sees more threads probably practically than anybody else.
And I think we can work with all the staff, you know, what's a good thing to include four times a year, so that they're getting regular packets. You know, again, often what we hear is, you know, they are shared with their staff, but their staff read them and then they stay on top of it.
Yep, yep.
So when an issue comes up, so it's, you know, when we say, well, what more could we do? That's something more we can do, and so I think we want to start doing that.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And then kind of keep a, a regular loop. A good example, every month, we all talk about the amazing things or exciting programs or events or happenings. We have to remember our legislators need to hear that too. Again, they're not able to come to everything, but just if they know what's going on, I think that's, that's something we can do, that's positive. Let me throw my glasses on. The leadership team met with Development, Developmental Services Center, DSC, about potential cooperative efforts we can do to hire some of their clients, maybe there's some jobs or positions that we might want to consider in the, in the future. There could be some volunteer level, but I think they're primarily probably in the need of jobs. Volunteerism could lead to a job, but we, we want to at least explore that and see what we can do in working with that group. Coalition, we had our meeting last week, I was very pleased. The previous month, I think staff was out at a conference, Elsie was able to cover for me and she was able to share some of the ideas of our pop-up plays and other activities she's working on. And there was some interest by the coalition to help maybe fund some of that, so I was really pleased.
Oh terrific.
You know, they're small level sort of things, but every little bit helps and they, the key point I want, they recognize that that kind of work is the important work that needs to be done to meet some of those. So when they're able to step up and help fund an activity, we're, we know we're working in the right direction.
Right, and they'll, and they'll see the benefit of it in five, seven, 10 years.
And as a, you know, contributor and a partner, that's a good way to sort of even that out. I do want to mention too, there's been a couple of shootings recently. We started out in 2018, much better, but very concerned of the last two recent ones. So that kind of took a little, you know, wind out of everybody's sails. There was a, you may have seen in the paper, a call-in. Again, there was a number of offenders brought in and, and, you know, provided opportunities. But a new kind of program area we're starting to work on is sort of at, I don't like to use the word at-risk because it's over, overused, but there's a number of, you know, young teens that are very young age, I call it the circuit breaker age, that if we can catch them and break that circuit, we're probably turning a corner. But the idea is to start working with those groups, you know, maybe do some visits with, you know, local authorities, kind of visit, you know, some of our grimmer situations of, you know, what the coroner's involved with, those type of, you know, close and personal touches to, you know, makes people, make sure people are, are really aware. But I think that's, the good thing that I'm excited about is we're starting to think about that next group that's sort of in the, you know, maybe not on the best track. And they're in both communities, they're in Rantoul, Champaign-Urbana, Savoy, so it's, you know, it's spread out. So we're really excited about that.
What sort of employment work is the coalition doing?
Right, there's summer work programs, and again, we're a little more challenged in Urbana, we don't have as many resources. I think that's ultimately a goal everybody wants to get to is, or, again, it could be a grant, could it be a federal initiative? Some way to create a much more stable job or work program. The current work program, as I understand, is, you know, limited, it's only, what, nine weeks?
Six.
Six, six, thank you. So it's much shorter window. Now, we've been able to augment that and in a few cases, continue to hire and keep people for the summer. But, I mean, it's, it's very challenging to offer somebody a six-week, you know, job experience
Yeah, that's not enough.
and expect it to really make an impact in their, you know, both financial and job skills. So we're appreciative, if we can match those, that stretches that, but we do need a comprehensive work-study, you know, kind of program. I always look back to the, you know, seventies when we had the Conservation Corps and that employed hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids across Illinois doing conservation work, learning job skills, you know, and paying reasonable, you know, wages, minimum wage. So we'd love to see a work program like that return that's robust, that really could take on the numbers. But we're doing everything we can do. I also want to mention, rec staff continues to go to the high school to, you know, assist with job applications. So, you know, we're there side by side, but we're going to need more resource, you know, to be able to hire and give jobs, you know, on the economic side to make a difference. Very pleased with the arts and culture matrix, we're continuing to work ahead. I think accomplished a number of things, have several programs, you know, things in the works, but something we're trying to look toward the future is maybe the idea of either ourselves or working collaboratively with other locals, you know, some sort of art fair, art, art activity, you know, a large-scale event like that. So we're going to start doing some homework this summer likely. We'll, and fall, we'll be visiting some of the existing, you know, events that are out there to sort of kind of see what's being offered, get an assessment, is there a need for it? I think there's a number of locals interested in that. Maybe there's an opportunity to work together, do something collaboratively. So again, just looking to the future on that one. I think, mentioned a few reports, probably covered strategic planning, we're in the process of that. Obviously, we're trying to gear up for our, our first kickoff session and start to pull that, that whole process together. I think we spent a little time at the last study session talking about the KRT transportation plan, but we really appreciate everyone coming out for that, I thought we had a very good discussion. Coming up next is the second public meeting, so obviously, once we get that finalized, we have a report that will sort of support our findings and give us direction. ITEP, I think it's, some of these things have been covered, but I just want to compliment the team that's working, both our consulting team and the staff teams doing an amazing job of trying to speed that process up. We're pulling design things together, the engineering. You know, it is an iDOT project and they have a checkbook process to that, but as much as we can do to help that, we're doing that. Excited again, KRT at the Weaver Park site, trying to get the, you know, the parking and amenities moving, just an update on that. We did ask the Urbana Parks Foundation if they would consider, the fundraising subcommittee, if they would consider helping to fund if there are undesignedated, you know, unrestricted dollars that could be shared, would they consider that? So I think there was positive feelings about that, so we'll continue to work on that. Staff's working on evaluations, that's a big HR function at this time of the year, both wage and performance evaluations. Summer staff training is coming up a little bit earlier this year, so we'll be getting ready for that. April 25th, there'll be a rotary tree planting as part of the rotary fundraising efforts at Crestview Park. Just a small activity, about three trees will be planted, but the Urbana Rotary was able to raise funds and tap into a matching gift to provide 85 new trees for Urbana. Some, a few for the park district, but we actually recommended the city has lost a lot of street trees due to disease, just pressures, water droughts, weather, you know, combination, age situations. So it's a great help to the, to the city of Urbana, they're very excited also. But we'll have a little activity out at Crestview for that. Staff's working on plans for Arbor Day, which is April 27th, if you're tracking your calendars. The planning team is working with us on a Landscape Architecture 234 class that's doing a site design using the downtown KRT as a, as a potential. So I missed, I think, the first round of meetings, there's early stuff, but I think several of us will be there, a few more touches, and at the end of the semester, we'll get to see their work, so we look forward to that. What's my last note here? Andy last mentioned on the health and wellness facility meeting, but as Andy said, I think What's my last note here? Uh, Andy last mentioned on the health and wellness, uh, facility meeting, but as Andy said, I think our, I was very proud of our team. We did an excellent job of bringing clear vision to what our needs are and also making the connective points that these kind of facilities really could, you know, get downtown Urbana, um, and the rest of Urbana excited. So we're looking, looking forward to more of that. I can answer any questions if you have any about any other areas.
Do you have an update on CUSR and their, where they're moving and all that?
I think we're still working through that. I think there are a few opportunities to provide some space and I think Champaign's looking at a couple of different moves, but we don't have a complete comprehensive, you know, what's going to happen now in May, in June, and next fall. We're pulling that together. I think there'll be provisions made, but obviously, one thing we talked with the Farnsworth group about is we are definitely including special rec in, in this proposed new space option, at least enough opportunities that they would have, uh, you know, want to be there and, and find things to do. Um, it's, it's definitely a challenge.
How far along are they in their planning for the new Martin Community Center? Is there room?
Pretty far along. I think they, um, are working with Boys and Girls Club on that project. And so I think we had an update at the coalition, a presentation.
Uh huh.
Um, and there's basically a conceptual layout and plan and the building massing and site plans developed. So I think they're probably moving into refinement of the program and the site.
So no thought given to CUSR space there, you think?
I think there was maybe some thought given, but I think the partner is the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay.
Do you think that's somewhat donor-driven or, or not?
I, I think the facility itself is donor-driven. That's how they got a $4 million gift and a arrangement of changing spaces at the Human Kinetics Park and all of that. But their other partner is the Boys and Girls Club. The idea is that they would partner with that group and provide space there. The current space would then be used for more teen activities, boys and girl clubs with older, older users.
I just didn't know if the partnership was a little bit also donor-driven, not just the community center.
I don't know about the Boys and Girls Club funding. You know, maybe they have donors, but I just don't know about that, but I know CPD does have some donors. And they're looking for additional donors a- also. So they're in that process of fundraising. So there likely could be more donors. I'm, I'm sure there will be, um, at various levels.
I think one of their funders recommended the Boys Club, Girls Club be involved with giving the money.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it was a stipulation, but it was definitely kind of led in that direction. You work with the Boys and Girls Club and here's money to help build it.
And that's going to serve a greatly underutilized community too.
Right.
Oh, absolutely. That's a great place for it, yeah.
Facility.
Of course.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it really points to that, you know, everybody needs indoor activity space. You know, the Cunningham's Children Home is including indoor recreational, you know, gym-type, you know, space. Boys and Girls Club, CPD, UPD has a need. I think Savoy is bursting at the seams at their facility. Um, now there too, so.
Well, and Hutt's putting in new housing there.
Right, Bristol Place.
So that's right in the neighborhood.
Right. It's a good location. It makes a lot of sense.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it does.
And I think special rec will have spaces they could have access to. It's just not their home base.
Right.
From, from a staffing standpoint, um, we did hire Caitlin Hitzman, who was our, uh, adult coordinator. She's now going to be the manager. Um, and then they have just put out advertisement for a new youth and teen coordinator. So it's been quite a while since we've had a full staff, but we are working in that direction now, so.
They work so hard.
Right.
Yep.
We're hoping to get back on track, pick it up, go back to the strategic plan and start plugging away at that.
Okay. Any other questions? Uh, moving on to President's Report and upcoming meetings, uh, we, we just set a meeting for ourselves on the 27th, um, before the uptack meeting. Study session is April 3rd and, uh, I gather that solar options are one of the things likely to be on there and perhaps also some preliminary budget discussions. Um, and then the April 10th regular board meeting or bid approvals and we'll be looking at the budget as a, accepting the preliminary budget. And, uh, some additional budgetary things going through that meeting. Moving on to liaison reports, the finance study group did meet last Friday. I think we've already discussed here tonight most of what we tried to cover there, in, either in the, uh, study session or, I mean, in, in the executive session or, uh, since, and, and some of the things that, that Derek and Andy provided us. So I don't think there's much to add in that regard. And was there anything from the policy study group?
There is not. We will be meeting on May 4th.
And, uh, Urbana Parks Foundation, LaShonda, is there anything to, to mention?
To report?
Yeah, okay. And, and the planning study, the uptack planning study group.
Just me on there?
We're still cruising.
Oh, left dancing, sorry. I see that now.
I'm here.
Committee of one? Study group of one? We'll update that.
Okay, moving on then to, uh, old business. There was no old business removed from the consent agenda, so there's nothing to do there. Now, moving on to new business, we actually do have action to take on bids for the King Park Tennis Court project.
Can I just jump in here real quick? I'm not sure if I should really be a part of the approval process for this portion because I'm so involved with Jettie Rose Day. So I'm not sure. I just want to make sure that there isn't a conflict of interest on behalf of the board and my participation in Jettie Rose Day.
Well, I certainly would, Michael's.
Well, you mean in, in terms of, of approving a contract or, or not? I, do you have a financial interest in Jettie Rose Day? I mean, are you, are you being paid for that?
I'm not being paid for it. So, I mean, I deal with some of the financials somewhat. Um, so I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm using good judgment, not.
Well, I, I appreciate your, your openness with that. It, it's not a requirement as a board member that you not have other community involvements.
Okay.
Um, I mean, if you were on the Rotary Club, for example, I don't, I don't think that would disqualify you from approving a, a contract where some of the money came from a Rotary Club donation, for example. I mean, I'd, you, you.
Yep. If you made $5,000 a year on tennis courts and basketball, then it might be a conflict, but.
Yeah, if you're, if you're putting up the fence.
Just a comment about the park improvement is really, you know, a park improvement based on our capital needs. We've worked with the neighborhood group for a number of years. We've known that there was an interest in basketball. If there's any way we could get that option in the site, particularly after the basketball courts there weren't available any longer. I think that sort of intensified that discussion. So our analysis was, was the courts weren't heavily utilized. Is that an opportunity to modify that? And so I think it would be like any other capital improvement project we do in anybody's neighborhood park. Um, certainly has taken a while to get there, so it's not something we've rushed to, but, um, that's the staff status of that project.
Well, I guess one thing about the tennis courts, I would say is that, um, six of the up, of the tennis courts in the community, have been upgraded and just, well, the one at, um, by the middle school. That's actually, I think, seven courts. So nine of our courts have been upgraded very well in the last 18 months.
Correct.
So, um, it seems that this report indicates that basketball and, and, um, bank shot is a higher priority in that, in that park. And the fact that we've upgraded all those tennis courts would support that we can make that shift in this park and meet the needs of everybody.
So what we kind of learned as well with those planning studies is that, uh, bank shot and basketball were the highest priority, but we also heard that there was a desire to keep that tennis amenity in King Park. So when we approached BCA and started, uh, working on design, it was to maintain that one tennis court on that, uh, western side and then transform the eastern court for the southern portion as bank shot basketball, the northern, northern portion of the eastern court, uh, as a half-court basketball. I'll just kind of go into details of, we had the court rehab, the crack repair and seal, uh, re-stripe and recolor. And then two alternatives within that bid. The first one was to remove fencing around the tennis portion of the court, the eastern portion, and then realign it down the midline between the two court areas, giving a better division and separation of those two, uh, sport areas. And then we had a, another alternative for, um, removing and replacing Blair Park, uh, ballfield fencing. The package was let out on, uh, January 30th and was sent out to 14 companies. Um, Harris Barrier was the apparent low bidder. Shortly after that bid opening, we, um, were notified by another bidder on the project. Uh, they had some concerns with the price from Harris Barrier. That was too low. UPD has worked with Harris Barrier on a number of court projects, um, previously. So we reached out, um, to their owner and discussed the, the project. And at that point, we learned that they were, they actually had provided some pricing based on specifications that they received from Bank Shot, the company, not that were within our Burns Clancy and Associates, uh, specifications. And we were notified that they would be able to fulfill the project utilizing their pricing for Bank Shot. So we, staff discussed and, uh, feel it was better to release the bidders from their bid, rebid that project. We'll pull out the Bank Shot purchasing portion. There's multiple leak, uh, weak lead time that's associated with it. So what we're recommending is that UPD would then purchase the Bank Shot 13-goal station, um, pending your signature tonight and, uh, have that system in place, ready, um, for the newly selected, um, bidder at the next board meeting.
The other two bidders bid based upon BCA specifications for, for, for post and foundations. So we had a different bid. Um, it's in, the park district's best interest to use the system that Bank Shot specifies. It goes best with their system and it'll, it'll save us some money as well. That's why we're recommending reject all three bids and rebid it. The reason we're suggesting we purchase the Bank Shot now is there's a lead time. And that was really what was driving our interest in getting awarded tonight. If we purchase it outright tonight, we can get that going and then we can award, uh, the installation and the, the crack filling at a later date.
So was the BCA specification somehow more robust or just more expensive? And, and are you suggesting we could get by with something less robust at this point?
It's not only more robust, it's, 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 um, it's, it's
Engineered.
Traditional basketball, you know, stands that are meant to withstand aggressive play. Um, Bank Shot's just a totally different system. It's for young kids. At times, there's two posts that support a single back, backboard, whereas BCA, you know, is just using this one singular tubular. To be frank, you know, it's something that we wish BCA had, had looked more closely into and caught. Um, but, uh, we're going to work with them on getting it back out to bid using the, the Bank Shot proprietary system.
We, we had discussed outright purchase in the beginning. Hey, maybe we could speed it up, purchase it. We thought, well, let's keep it together. So now this option gives us some more lead time to stay on schedule.
Okay. And so the recommendation is that we, uh, turn down all the, all the bids and rebid the project with the, the Bank Shot piece pulled out for just direct purchase by the.
Yeah.
And do you, is that expensive enough that you need special board approval to, to buy it?
It's, it's, it's below $25,000. Um, we asked the UOL to approve $30,000 to not exceed. Uh, you, you never know. It's close enough. You know, we may find out tomorrow in place the order that there's something that we missed. We thought, we thought it'd be prudent to get, uh, your approval on it. Plus, given that we're bringing this all to you, uh, tonight, we thought getting approval, so it's a pre-purchase. Because it really does commit us towards a larger project down the road.
And so this, this project would be the tennis and the, the Bank Shot?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah.
So how do you, do we need a motion here? Is that?
Is the page four paragraph.
Okay.
Start to phrase out a proposed motion.
The recommenda- or a move that we reject the low bid? Is that what you want to hear?
Yes.
Okay, the low bid of $44,781 from Harris Barrier. All three bids. Right? Or do I need to mention them all specifically?
If you don't mind reading them, it'd be just detailed and we'll capture it all.
So we're going to reject the low bid of $44,781 from Harris Barrier, the second low bid of $75,800 from McConnell and Associates, and the third low bid, which isn't so low, of $83,123 from MTJ Sports on the basis that it is not advantageous to the interests of the Urbana Park District. Um, I also, um, and in, in addition, we would, um, approve the purchase of the Bank Shot 13-station system at a cost not to exceed $25,000. Is that right?
Cover all your needs?
Thirty?
Yeah, the actual quote is for 33, so I think 20, 25. I'm sorry, for 23, so I think 25's sufficient.
Twenty-five, okay.
Second.
Get for all that hash.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions regarding, uh, the motion before us? Hearing none. Should we do a roll call on this, given that we are rejecting bids? I, I think perhaps we should. Let's start.
Aye.
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 Oh, yeah, oh, we did. Never mind. We had, go ahead.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, okay. Sorry, a little space pilot there. We did have both this motion and second, so. Uh, so that combined thing has been approved unanimously. And, uh, next item is actually any new business removed from the consent agenda? And there was none. So we're down to, uh, comments from commissioners.
I just wanted to say that I really, really liked the piece that you put together for the legislative breakfast yesterday. And I think
It was good.
Yeah, it'll have a lot of good uses. Um, I, I, I think I also recommended it as not only, uh, I think you, you, Ellen had mentioned taking it to the Park State at the Capitol, but as well, I think it's a very good piece for the foundation. Maybe with a little bit of, of tweaking and things like that. But I thought it just did a really nice job of telling our story and, and and even if some of the content has to be changed a little bit, it's a really nice format, so.
Thank you.
It looks great.
As mentioned, staff spent a lot of time, all the staffs, on all the materials and really hope you hit the home, the message and, you know, people take it or at least we can use it for other purposes too.
Yeah. It was nice to see so many of us at the legislative breakfast.
We had a very good turnout. Very pleased.
Yeah, I'm sorry I wasn't there.
Glad you're here now.
Yeah, this is a, this is a better place for you. Yes. And nobody wanted your germs.
Correct.
Yes. Nice of you not to share.
Any other commissioner comments? Well, hearing none, I believe we've exhausted our agenda and I will declare us adjourned.